Oh my God!
I can't get out. It's burning, it's burning in my head. I'm trying to get out of this, I need to breathe. Oh, no, 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 no. Stop looking at me as if I'm your friend. Please don't look at me like that. I got you in every breath that I take. It's burning, it's burning, it's burning. I'm in truth and fire. Everything can be wrong, but I'm gonna be alright. I won't give up, I won't give up. Ta 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 ta. Yeah. 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 Oh. Can't get out. Go, go, go. Can't get out. Yeah, can't get out. It's burning, it's burning in my head. I'm trying to get out of this, I need to breathe. I need to breathe. No, 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 no. Stop looking at me as if I'm your friend. Please don't look at me like that. I'm in truth and fire. It's burning, it's burning, it's burning. I'm in truth and fire. Everything can be wrong, but I'm gonna be alright. I won't give up, I won't give up. Ta 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 ta. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I just wanna be here. Yeah, yeah. I can't get out. I can't get out. Yeah. I'm running, I'm running, I'm running. Running, running, I'm running. I'm running, I'm running, I'm running. I'm running, I'm running, I'm running. Running, running, I'm running. Running, running, I'm running. I'm running, I'm running, I'm running. I'm running, I'm running, I'm running. Running, running, I'm running. I'm running, I'm running, I'm running. I don't wanna leave. I don't wanna stay. I don't wanna leave. I don't wanna stay. I'm running, I'm running, I'm running. Running, running, I'm running. I'm running, I'm running, I'm running. Running, running, I'm running. Will you tell me what I did wrong? What did I, what did I do wrong? Will you tell me what I did? What did I, what did I do wrong? Hey, yeah. I'm getting on my second seat. What did I, what did I, what did I? I'm gonna jump in the harbor and then I'll... You cut me off, you're a fool. You wanted to die, so why let it loose? Never would I be seeing you. I saw some sadistic vengeance exercise. To do that you could mean. I don't think you would pull out on the other side. Yes, I would. Yes, I would. I would. I... I'm running, I'm running. Now I'm... I'm gonna run. Yeah. I'm running. My voice is not inside this thing. You... I'm running. Hey! I'm running, I'm running, I'm running. 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 You take it all away. You take it all away. I'm running, I'm running, I'm running. See you when... Too much hanging on what we have to say. Someone's gotta say something. It's my heart, I'm breaking instead. She, yeah, she, yeah. I'm running. Promise the world that I did our face. Tell me your future, if it takes. You take it all away. Yeah. Sometimes they can believe it. Sometimes they say that you need it. Why the point of being honest with yourself? I should've done that. I hate you. Yes, I'm sorry, but all these situations. Here in complex, I know what you say. Shit, say, say what you try to do. And you're all sky high. Oh, my love, I'm never ready. I'm being attached, I'm getting crazy. Promise the world that I did our face. Tell me your future, if it takes. You take it all away. You take it all away. Sometimes they can believe it. Sometimes they say that you need it. Why the point of being honest with yourself? I'm running, I'm running, I'm running. I'm sorry, but all these situations. You take it all away. It's killing me inside. They made me alive. I hope my heart's still racing. We never let it die. We never make it right. Said you know. Situation. So, we're gonna be... Ooh. Yeah, 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 yeah. Ooh. I'm up to the church, but I'm so mad. I'm just a wrecked old man. I'm just a wrecked old man. I'm just a wrecked old man. I'm running. Back to the road. Now I'm in a way ahead two nights. I'm headed to the loft. My body out the door. I'm gonna read the... Something bad, bad, bad. Stand on the block till the kids start laughing. I'm gonna read my people from the back of my head. While the drinks get cold, I'm heading back to bed. We're gonna be running. Oh, something bad. Oh, something bad. I'm tearing up. It's a night we love. Time's a trap, I'm gonna call it. I'm gonna be a fool, but I'm running. Stand on the block till the kids start laughing. I'm running, I'm running, I'm running. The drinks get cold, I'm heading back to bed. We're gonna be running. Oh, something bad. Oh, something bad. Oh. Something bad. I'm running, I'm running, I'm running. I'm running, I'm running, I'm running. Something bad.
And cats. So, if you don't take anything serious. Hey, Bobby, where are you? This is too fun. I like it. All right, best soloists. We had a ton of awesome soloists. And the judges were sitting there arguing. I'm like, you just gotta pick one. Just gotta pick one. And I'm like, we're gonna be running out of songs real quick. We have to pick one. So they did pick one. Jersey Tolentino. Like, it was made for me, right? It looked purple already. All right, so we didn't have this arrangement. And as I was sitting here, I'm like, we have three of the best arrangers in the nation for Acapulco. Who is Shant and Catherine. Give them a round of applause. I love them. They are literally the best. One of the, or some of the best in the nation. So why not give a feather in somebody's cap for best arrangement? And to have them pick the best arrangement means more than most things. So we have actually two. Ooh, I know, that's what I said to them. Grease Walters and Donnie Urie. And because we didn't, we just thought about it tonight. We didn't have anything cute to give them, but we'll think of something by tomorrow, okay? I promise. Now, your fan favorite, what you did, we had, it was really close. I mean, it was a true pie, as you looked at the crowd. But fan favorite this year is under arrest. So they'll be going home with $250 tomorrow, right? We'll spend it all once. Now, for the places. Things that we sat down and we looked at. This was very, very close as we were running through them. Third place, the Marquette Nationals. They also won best country song. I forgot about that one. We'll, we'll account for it. So we have a pretty unique situation. This has never happened before, but we have a legitimate tie for first place.
I'm going.
Goodbye, Lee. And so we sat there, like, what do we do? What do we do? But this is about giving back, right? And about giving back to youth, and about giving back to the colleges. So we're gonna match that thousand with another thousand. So both groups win in the thousand dollars tonight. But you're gonna help me, and I'm not gonna tell them until you see it. So the opposite way. We're gonna go slow. Pictures of rocks and waterfalls. All right, have a good night. We'll see you over the next morning.
And it comes to me like a whole bag of bread. I see no shame, I'm running. So I was born and made of. One thing I know, I always hold. It's all good. We're all living life. We're all living life. Sure, I'm working hard, I'm letting on just enough. We're all working hard, I know where I stand. You can take it, be there. This is you, this is who I am. I'm in tears. The front porch has raveled. And I told you, it feels like home to me. I'm losing, I'm running, I'm rocking. Oh, and we're in love. I'm running. It's all good. My soul in the moon and darks. I'm running, I'm running. You know, this is my home. I'm running, I'm running. I'm trying to find my way. I'm running, I'm running. We're going. I'm running, I'm running. I'm trying to find my way. I'm running, I'm running. We're going. I'm running, I'm running. I'm trying to find my way. I'm running, I'm running. We're going. I'm running, I'm running. I'm trying to find my way. I'm running, I'm running. We're going. I'm running, I'm running. I'm trying to find my way. Oh, yeah.
And I'll watch you as you roll into one person that I remember. Nothing standing in your way will ever slow you down. And you'll wait for the day of cigarettes will come and save. Do you remember? Laying on the sidewalk. I'm living on the road. I made a buck off my soul. I've been saying stories to the crowd. It's been a while since I've been home. I think about you every night. I wonder what it would've been like if I stuck around, sat down, maybe in another life. And if I fly to you. Will I still have a place inside your heart? When you see. Let me go. Will you love me for who I am? You keep me steady from the ground. Hands off to the clouds. That's my life. It shines bright. I'm gonna tell you why. I know it's hard, I'm waiting. I just hope that I lose weight. As I told you, when I say I'll be back someday. And if my eyes fall. Will I still have a place inside your heart? When you see. Let me go. Will you love me for who I am? Will you love me? And if my eyes fall. Will I still have a place inside your heart? Do you remember? When you see. Let me go. Will you love me for who I am? Will you love me? For who I am? As you grew into that person you had always wanted. Turn into nothing standing in your way could ever slow you down. And you wait for the day of cigarettes will come and save. But you know that how it works. Love ain't real unless it hurts. Laying on the sidewalk.
Right outside of the... I don't need to wait. But ain't my grand, this is God's. And then it's falling, it's across the brain. A little bit of money you put in my way. What's my goal in the night? I saw the light. Sunrise in the back of your body. Young and lucky with the side gear. Baptized and only one or a child. The dogs are running. Say he might have stayed there. Bang down, easy whistle in the wind. I'll ditch you at the mound. Devil down the door. He didn't stick around, this is God's. I'm gonna turn the bird. I'm gonna tell him next time. Take a break, break, break. I'm setting up. Let's go to the avenue. I'm gonna play. I saw the light. Sunrise in the back of your body. Young and lucky with the side gear. Baptized and only one or a child. The dogs are running. Say he might have stayed there. Bang down, easy whistle in the wind. I'll ditch you at the mound. Devil down the door. He didn't stick around, this is God's. I don't care what my headstone reads or what kind of pine wood box I end up in. When it's my time to just next to you. I'm here to watch you. Sunrise in the back of your body. Young and lucky with the side gear. Baptized and only one or a child. The dogs are running. Say he might have stayed there. Bang down, easy whistle in the wind. I'll ditch you at the mound. Devil down the door. He didn't stick around, this is God's.
Come. I'm running, I'm running. Oh, yeah, I'm running. I'm running, I'm running. Do you know what to believe? Maybe I love you, maybe I'm an angel. There's something that I do. They're paralyzed. Remind that you're mine, baby. Then I knew I am. I can hear you say my name. Or the devil in disguise. Remind that you're mine, baby. Then I know it's... You're my soul, even. The fuck up. Trying to keep you on my side. And I run in my skin. And I can't feel your arms around me. All my life's broken, dear. Maybe I love you, maybe I'm an angel.
There's something in your eyes They prepare a life Revive that you love me better Than anyone else Right here to save my life Or the devil in disguise Revive that you love me better Than anyone else No, but you gotta do Save my life in disguise There's something in your eyes They prepare a life Revive that you love me better Than anyone else Right here to save my life Revive that you love me You love me better There's something in your eyes They prepare a life Revive that you love me better Than anyone else You're coming over better Right here to save my life Revive that you love me better Than anyone else I don't want pain But I can't change you I don't want pain A butterfly Beautiful and so deprived of oxygen Colder than your father's eyes He never learned to sympathize With anyone Blueish boy above his head Paint above your eyes True Too afraid to step outside Paranoid and petrified But I can't I don't want pain But I can't change you But I can't change you Suffer, be a sleeper Three hours each night These songs were the one with the moon Somehow you gonna play this Through a famous tune Just a baby born blue I don't want pain So hard I can't change you I don't want pain But I can't change you But I say I don't want pain But I can't change you Two dollars, two dollars
Yes, kids! I love you!
Two dollars, two dollars Two dollars, god, god Two dollars, two dollars Two dollars, two dollars Oh, oh, oh Two dollars, two dollars I saw the big I want two dollars, god, god Two dollars, be my man I was turning to a river Oh, oh, oh I'm trying to find the sign that he could take me Get down now I'm just a holy fool Oh, baby, it's so cruel But I'm still in love with you, baby I'm just a holy fool Oh, baby, it's so cruel But I'm still in love with you, baby Two dollars, two dollars Oh, oh, oh Two dollars, two dollars I'm loving time One of you But something's weird And be away from you Two dollars is my virtue And two dollars is another demon I cling to Oh, oh, oh I cling to Two dollars, baby I'm just a holy fool I'm still in love with you, baby Two dollars, two dollars Oh, oh, oh Oh, two dollars Two dollars, god I'm loving two dollars
Oh, yeah! Get it on!
Her lips like honey And bloody like wine Skin like filthy meat Holdin' her words so down She was a preacher's daughter And give my daddy's heart And the rebel is so proud of her to me The river was cold The river was dry She rode from the mountain straight across the river And her car ran cold But her love rode deep She's by a rock mountain And everyone she meets Everyone she needs She's my favorite, she rolls up But that sunshine and the dawn Makes the loneliest star wonder The ride is worth it And that beast don't find the sun Lord, don't you worry, pray She's coming around the bend She's holding mine in her hand Lord, please go It's not time for leaving My soul On one side of the wall Eyes where you never last You raise your hand On the other side, you're in love You're stealing everything She's my favorite, she rolls up But that sunshine and the dawn Makes the loneliest star wonder The ride is worth it And that beast don't find the sun Lord, don't you worry, pray She's coming around the bend She's holding mine in her hand She's my favorite, she'll tell her to She's moving to me Cause it's all she knows to do But yeah, she's running She's calm and just go Under an appellation Sunset sky She's my She's my favorite, she rolls up But that sunshine and the dawn Makes the loneliest star wonder The ride is worth it And don't you worry, pray She's coming around the bend She's holding mine in her hand The ride is worth it And sunshine She's coming around the bend Holdin' mine in her hand My little My little
We love you, Wounded Island! Everybody, put your hands together for Under a Rock!
Take it, take it all away
Ooh, take my breath away Ooh 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 Woman hates Woman tries Woman breaks Turning off you in love Woman hating the mask on Woman staring at her feet Woman only wants falling in the rain In the midnight sun
I am Something that I can't hide
So you I am the good I am the bad I am Woman monster Woman child Woman hero Woman wild Woman whisper Woman scream Woman listen Woman love Woman hate Let it go Woman hurt Woman shine
Running out of fuel Woman cry Woman beg Woman struggle
I am the only one that you See
I'm tired and I know what's wrong
Woman, woman
Oh, woman, woman It's hard to say I'm sorry But I'm learning what I've gained You shouldn't say you want me If you don't want me badly We learn to love the same songs Now they never sound the same Instead, alright, allow you To comprehend the Of missing nights where I am the trampoline And turn our dreams into the sky Till the stars fade away Boy, you showed me how to love But no one told me how to lose you How can something hurt so much When I didn't even mean to choose you Running off the cobble street Thought you'd always be beside me How could I be You should have gave it more time To work your feelings out Now I hide under the covers Only think through our love days So black and cold and summer Takes different from each other And turn our dreams into the sky Till the stars fade away Boy, you showed me how to love But no one told me how to lose you How can something hurt so much When I didn't even mean to choose you Running off the cobble street Thought you'd always be beside me How could I be Getting older, you is like climbing a mountain So gentle You just reach for the top And then you're all I need I am so So naive Boy, you showed me how to love But no one told me how to lose you How can something hurt so much
Alright, for real this time Let's do it for my time for it!
What are you wearing? What? I'm George Washington Like, that's my country You know what I'm saying? Brooke, "country"? Like, how would it's? Yee-haw! You know?
Wait, really?
Yeah No, it's a I'm gonna get work I'm gonna get work It's on here Just Anyways, um, our next group is from Is UW Milwaukee's only competitive archipelago Founded in 1776
Founded!
Founded in 2022. They have placed in the top three of all three ICCA quarterfinals that they have competed in. One of their members, Kyle Tenting, is actually limited edition alums when they'll be returning to his home stage tonight. They're so excited to be returning for their second year of Archipelagos. Now, keep an eye out for Public Hearing!
Tell me what I did wrong. What did I, what did I do wrong? Tell me what I did wrong. What did I, what did I do wrong? Hey, yeah. You know, I'm still in love. I love you, but I'm not that bad. Because you're simple. You wanna dump the heart, so blind. Never would I be seeing you. There's some sadistic vengeance that's inside. Don't know that you would be. I don't think you would pull out on the other side. Oh, I know you're tired of the pain. It's not enough. It's not enough. I just need you. I'm so far behind. All it all now is for you. Now I'm sorry. I'm gathering the sunshine with you. My voice is soft inside, it's in. You won't leave. Ooh, whoa. You take it all away. Did you? Too much hanging on. What we haven't said. Someone's gotta say something. It's not hard to break it and tell it. From in the world, that's the death I face. Tell me your future, give me grace. You take it all away. You take it all away. Sometimes they can believe it. Sometimes they don't need it. Why not put me in all these situations? Yes, I'm sorry about all these situations. Here on top, next to the ocean sink. She'll say, say all the trouble you face. Thank you for the sky. Oh, well, I'm a little wrecked. I'm out of touch, yeah, baby. From in the world, that's the death I face. Tell me your future, give me grace. You take it all away. You take it all away. Sometimes they can believe it. Sometimes they don't need it. I'm not like the trouble. Can't I catch up? Yes, I'm sorry about all these situations. You take it all away. It's killing me inside. They make me feel like. Shining on my heart, still racing. Only ever let it die. Only ever take back.
One, two, three, four. So we're both, so we're beat, so we're caught. We gotta take time. It's not about the happen. I'll drop to the church by the sun. Wrecked all the cash, and the teeth gone matches. I'll be the little people's on the bed. Down the freeway, had two necks. So I'm heading to the bar. Money at the back, she's got a reason. Something bad about that happen. Stand on the floor, I'm a big step ahead. I don't really have a feeling, oh, that's about it. The drinks keep coming, I had that shit. Wake up in the morning, I'm out of there. Oh, something bad. Oh, something bad. I'm tearing up. Morning, that's like a real long. I don't see the power. But I'm fucking, I'm not real. So bad, I'm happening. Stand on the floor, I'm a big step ahead. Oh, something bad. Whoa, something bad. Something bad. Something bad.
Please give a warm welcome to Bitches and Nones! Yes, they're all good, Ava!
Julie, Julie. I'm begging on you, please don't take my man. Julie. The pain that is beyond compare. Like a love so far away. I've received an answer from me. Our spine is like the rapist's brain. Our voices so flat, so rare. How come people don't enjoy me? I'm begging on you, please don't take my man.
I'm begging on you, babe. I'm begging on you, babe.
Oh, please don't take up even the love you share. He talks about you, basically. There's nothing I can do to keep you quiet. When he calls your name, Julie.
And I can easily understand how you feel. Take my man, don't know what it means to me.
Julie. Julie. I'm begging on you, please don't take my man. Julie. Cause I'm taking you.
I'm begging on you, baby. I'm begging on you, baby. Come back and talk to me. But I can't ever love again. This is what I want, Julie.
I can't have this talk with you. My happiness depends on you. Whatever you decide to do, Julie. Julie, Julie, Julie. I'm begging on you, please don't take my man. Julie. Julie, Julie. I'm begging on you, my love. Julie, 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 Julie. I'm begging on you, please don't take my man. I wanna roll with you. I'm a different movie. A little candlelight is for you. We shouldn't let this up to see without it. Nobody, you're ready to die. Julie. Can't be mine, can't be mine. Can't be mine, can't be mine. She's your baby. So be mine. So be mine. Can't be like you. Share my love. I'm so pleased. Kisses are long, I'm so glad. I'm so glad this came. Guess you're still cruel. You're cruel. You're so nice, but you took me hard. Never know. I'm too simple. You take me there, too. I'm the guy, I'm stage. You, where we belong. You, I love you. You, you, you. You're so nice. You are in this so much. You watch me rise. Thank you, my love. I tell you, oh. I love you. I am not your god. I'm no goddess when I'm alone. Did I do wrong? Will you tell me what I did wrong? Did I do wrong? Will you tell me what I did wrong? Did I do wrong? Will you tell me what I did? Did I do wrong? Will you tell me what I did? Tell me what I did. 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 It's fun, I'm excitement. Instead of crying. There's more than I can make up. Make my mind. It's all I can think of. See my life. I'm a fighter. It made me shine brighter. I went through hell and then the devil. Till then, you became a cell of yours. So I can't change. I'm a fighter. I'm a fighter. I'm a fighter. I see my life. I'm a fighter. I'm brighter. It made me shine brighter. I went through hell and then the devil. Till then, you became a cell of yours. So I can't change. I'm a fighter. I'm a fighter. I'm a fighter. In my heart, I love you. And I'm searching for my love. I pray you. Tell me what's wrong. These promises, I'm gonna do. You give me the plan. Then you do it again. Baby, you're broken, I'm so ready. I'm just in fire. And baby, go higher. I built my way to broken things. And I pray where I'm at. That there's no words for you. And I wish I had. And my heart's always so blessed to be you. And it's still a big time. And I've got to give it to you. I don't want to stop smiling. But I know it's hard. It's my fault. I don't think I can heal the pain. Cause my heart still feels the pain. I should do much. It does, it does my brain. I'll wait. Even through hurt, I feel you. Come on, I'm taking you. Oh, I'm helping you. I should do much. I love my life. I try to. Come here, I do. Ooh. I love you. You're the one I want. I'll make you. I'll make you. Feel the star. Oh.
One, two, three. Dog, watch me. I'm scared when I look in here. I don't want no surprise. Zook she's a silly. And I'm just gonna get my show. I'm scared if I leave now. And it comes back to my soul. Say something nice to me. Say something nice to me. Another eye. You're so bad at eyes. So he invited me. Just sit beside me. Can't stand the sight of you. You seem very excited now. The only thing is, oh, that's all, that's all. Cause I'm a little sad. It all moves. It's easy. Sometimes, it's hard. Can I find a way? Cause I'm a little sad. The thrill is gone. 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 I can't see, I can't see. Cause it seems that I'm just sitting around. When you're far, I look over, but you're close. I shut the door. But the fear is not in my heart. Every second I need you. I miss you. Say something nice to me. Say something nice to me. Say something nice to me.
Won't you say? Won't you say? Won't you say? Won't you say? Baby, I think you're on top. She was gone. I'm so glad you're there. Cause you're on top.
I get all the love. She's enough. Let me get her, boy. They all try now. I live with the past. I know it's true. I'm sexy. This is what I got. The only thing is, oh, that's all, that's all. Cause I'm a little sad. Little, little hearts. Sometimes, it's hard. Can I find a way? Cause I'm a little sad. The thrill is gone. I'm trying my best. To keep you satisfied. Let you get yours. While I stay up at night. And you don't wanna know. How long I'm in. Let am I the greatest? My congratulations. All my love and patience. All my admiration. All the times I waited. For you to want me naked. Let am I the greatest? Let am I the greatest? Doing what's right. What's right. Without every war. And we don't have to fight. When it's not worth fighting for. Let am I the greatest? My congratulations. All my admiration. All my admiration. All the times I waited. For you to want me naked. You made it all possible. Let am I the greatest? The greatest. Whoa. The greatest. I love you. And I do. Just wanted passion from you. Just wanted what I can do. The greatest. And why I. Our story, it turns me on. Every time, every moment. My dear. In the dark, dressed in light. It's so sharp. Magic, but right through my eyes. My dear. Guess I shouldn't have kept you tonight. My heart was cold. Guess I shouldn't have. But I didn't need you, no. Guess I shouldn't have kept you tonight. My heart was cold. Guess I shouldn't have. But I didn't need you, no. Oh, oh. I just want to cry. Oh, oh. Tonight. Oh, oh. It's perfectly fine. Oh, next to the time. Let's dance to our sorrow. Make amends. There's so much you still don't know. My dear. All this spirit's contagious. Now there's more. That bless has overcome. My darling. Guess I shouldn't have kept you tonight. My heart was cold. Guess I shouldn't have. But I didn't need you, no. Guess I shouldn't have kept you tonight. My heart was cold. Guess I shouldn't have. But I didn't need you, no. Oh, oh. I just want to cry. Oh, oh. Tonight. Oh, oh. It's perfectly fine. Next to the time. Oh. Now I'm hurt. Now I'm hurt. Now I'm hurt. Now I'm hurt. Right to the end. To further. With the tears. And the tears. So we. Oh, yeah. Let it be, let it be, let it be, let it be. Let it be, let it be, let it be, let it be. Oh, yeah.
One, one, one by one. You hang them high. Your hands are steady. You sleep at night. How did you turn? My heart's a stone. I don't want it back, but I can't let go. Answer me now. It wasn't me a day. You stole it from me. I hated you once. I'm happy you're now. Please tell me out, tell me out.
We want to welcome you to the 2025 Akapaka Lips.
I'm thinking what I can see. I'm afraid we're gonna die in America. You know, I'm sick. And I want you. This way, I can make it see. You looking for another miracle? You're tired of talking after me. I just feel like we're no clash. You're my favorite, I'm a hash. We gotta keep it great. Oh, oh. Sensation. Ladies. We shake. Let's whip. You are a touch, a touch. You're a bit of shit, you're a bother. I got a touch. I got that. I'm walking like a tiger. I got your spirit, my friend. I'm just lost, drowning. I'm trying to take you in my hand. I'm so tired. I think I'm the one who's in the back. Yeah, yeah. I'm working on my own. Thinking what the people have been. I just feel like we're no clash. You're my favorite, I'm a hash. We gotta keep it great. Listen.
Sensation.
She's a true love.
Who's that? It's a good song.
This is the first time I've been especially.
This is the first time I've been especially seen. I believe in something that will do this thing. At least I know how hard it is to forgive me. It's all about you. So. So I can just hold up in the driveway. It's done. Bye, bye. It's over, it's over, oh yeah. Bye, bye. I'm taking one smile. Bye, bye. It's over, it's over, oh yeah. You know, I'm stronger than I think. You gave a dream on the floor with this dancing for me. Just turn the music up. Maybe someday we'll look back and love. You lose me. Now it's just too late to change me. So I can just hold up in the driveway. It's done. Bye, bye. Bye, bye. It's over, it's over, oh yeah. Bye, bye. I'm taking one smile. Bye, bye. It's over, it's over, oh yeah. Now it's time we finish with you. This is too hard to see. But it's better than I mean. Bye, bye. Bye, bye. It's over, it's over, oh yeah. You take one smile. Bye, bye. Bye, bye. Bye, bye. I'm taking one smile. It's over, it's over, oh yeah. See the storm inside your eyes. See the thorn twisting your side. I'm waiting for you. Slide here and then twist off there. I'm better than you. I'm good. With or without you. So without you. I can't live. Without you. Through the storm, we reach the shore. Give it all, but I won't. And I'm praying for you. My hands are tied. I'm dying. But I ain't blue. She got me. Nothing to lose. Nothing left to lose. And you give yourself away. And you give yourself away. And you give. And you give. And you give yourself away. When I know it's up. With or without you. I can't live. With or without you. With or without you. With or without you. I can't live. With or without you. With or without you. With or without you. I can't live. No, I can't live. My soul without you.
One, two, three, four.
You're a cowboy. You gotta take it slow. That boy is like a disease. Like a disease. Running, trying, trying. I didn't want to, why? Take it easy. He's like a curse. He's like a drug. You get addicted to the love. You're wanting it now, but it's too late. Cause you can't live without some more time. He's a good guy. Can't forget so much. I guess the record is shit. He's a good guy. The water guy's can't come in the rain. He's the darkest guy. He's who I had. He goes down and down. He's a dreamer that you don't wanna fight. You better work for your girl. I see that you're crying. You weren't hearing what I said. I just wanna say that. Cause I feel like I'm in a nightmare. You can't get away. Can't take it. Don't you know that you're sound? I can't tell. But I'm. You know. If you wanna believe that you want me to sing. You're missing me. Take my hand. He's a good guy. Can't forget so much. I guess the record is shit. He's a good guy. The water guy's can't come in the rain. He's the darkest guy. He's who I had. Goes down and down. He's a dreamer that you don't wanna fight. You better work for your girl. Da, da, hey, oh. Da, da, hey, oh. My God, I'm running out of cash for my life. You tell me anything you wanna hear. Hey, oh, bring your heart. It's just a matter of time. I'm just leaving. Good time. Can't forget so much. I guess the record is shit. Oh, you're one. A good drink. The water guy's can't come in the rain. He's the darkest guy. He's who I had. Goes down and down. He's a dreamer that you don't wanna fight. You better work for your girl. Oh, my God. He's a good guy. But I'm stuck in colder weather. Maybe tomorrow will be better. Can I call you then? She said you're a man. And you ain't ever gonna change. You've got a gypsy soul to blame. And you were born believing. She drank Colorado if he take her with him. Close is the door before the winter lets the cold in. Wonders if her love is strong enough to make him stay. She's dancing by the taillights shining through the windowpane. He said, "I wanna see you again." But I'm stuck in colder weather. Maybe tomorrow will be better. Can I call you then? She said you're a man. And you ain't ever gonna change. You've got a gypsy soul to blame. And you were born believing. Had a truck stop trying to just outside. Night is black as the coffee is drinking in. Leaving away grand eyes. He sees the same old light shining. She thinks of Colorado and the girl in red. I'm pissed. It's now or never. But I'm stuck in colder weather. Maybe tomorrow will be better. Can I call you then? Saying you're a man. You ain't ever gonna change. You've got a gypsy soul to blame. And you were born believing. Now it's a winding road. I'm back down. Though the lover got the runner. And we go round and round. Ain't my darling, darling. I don't want my love to end. You know it's you that called me back here, baby. When I close my eyes, I see you. Don't matter where I am. I can smell your perfume through these whispering palms. I'm with your ghost again. It's a shame about the weather. But I know the two will be together. And I can't wait till then. I can't wait. See you again. But I'm stuck in colder weather. Maybe tomorrow will be better. Can I call you then? Cause I'm around with you. You ain't ever gonna change. You've got a gypsy soul to blame. And I'm born believing. Born believing.
Mr. Jeff Hart said, "I'm not allowed to keep asking you how you guys are feeling." So instead, I'm gonna ask the crowd if I can get a big hot diggity.
Hot diggity.
That was pretty good. I think we could do it all the time. Hot diggity.
Hot diggity.
All right, there you go. All right, our next song is Another Love Song by Neo. This is the opener to our competition set for ICHSA. And it is such a fun and high energetic song. It's also a little bit flirty. So you'll be able to see that in the choreo. And if you listen to the words. Lily, count us up.
One, two, three. Here we go now.
Sing it again. I swear they look at me and I hear melodies. The sweetest melodies mixing with this love, babe. Come together for the perfect harmony. Pretty song that never leave. Now I ain't got no pain, babe. Ain't got no pain. Ain't got no shame, babe. Ain't got no shame. I don't know what it is when I hear your name. So then I just gotta say. You make me wanna sing another love song. Now enough to everybody to hear. You make me wanna sing another love song. And it started from the day you appeared. You make me wanna sing another love song. Another love song. I can't help. Girl, when you smile, I know you're smiling just me. You know I can't be your girl. Say it for the day. Say it, say it. What has gotten this on me? Cause that's what it's gonna be. I know I ain't got no pain, babe. Ain't got no pain. Ain't got no shame, babe. Ain't got no shame. I don't know what it is when I hear your name. So then I just gotta say. You make me wanna sing. Another love song. It's not good. Oh. Another love song. Now enough to everybody to hear. You make me wanna sing. Another love song. And it started from the day you appeared. You make me wanna sing. Another love song.
Our next piece that we will be singing for you is A Case of You by Joey Mitchell. When we. Yes. When we got the opportunity to sing at the Stinger Festival this past January, we all took a moment in the classroom to say what this song meant to us. Each and every one of us went around and had a different, complete interpretation of what this piece meant. And that really helped us connect as a group and become best friends. So I'm so excited to get to perform this piece for you. And I hope you enjoy A Case of You. and I hope you enjoy "A Case of You."
Just before I look at you You said I am as constant as a new working star And I stare constantly in the darkness Where's the... Where's the... If you want me, I'll be in the barn On the back of a car to coast Deep in the night I drew a map of Canada With your face, scarce storm in twirls Oh, you're in my blood like holy wine Tastes so bitter and so sweet I could drink a case of you Oh, darling, I would still be on my feet I'd still be on my feet Still be on my I am the only painter I took a rose and painted a song I'm glad what I can't hold And I draw, draw to the line I need to write I love woman She had a mouth like yours She knew your life She knew your devil inside of you She said, "Don't say Stay within as you can But be prepared to leave" Oh, you're in my blood like holy wine Tastes so bitter and so sweet A case of you Oh, darling, I would still be on my feet Darling, I would still be on my feet I'd still be on my Still be on my feet She loved me, don't waste your time My way too messed up to feel Go find somebody who's just as kind I need and shadow you see What I've heard around you, it hurts my fears You see yourself in my arms I won't get tired My cold, cold heart can give you something I can't find I've been searching for a feeling Haven't found it yet Hope I don't regret it I've been searching for a feeling I've got everything to feel You shouldn't be there I know now I can't see all the way Through the same You should have been with me Thank you for all I know To love anyway Or hate you twice Tell you why I'm lost In my mind I was seeing Won't change I won't move on again Something I can't find I've been searching for a feeling Haven't found it yet Hope I don't regret it I've been searching for a feeling I've got everything to feel Tell me you want me You're leaving love I've been searching for a I've been searching You're leaving love I've been searching Searching I've been searching I've been searching I've been searching love I've been searching I've been searching I've been searching love Baby, soon you'll be You'll be just as messy as me I've been searching for a feeling Haven't found it yet Hope I don't regret it I've been searching for a feeling 'Cause I've got everything to feel I've been searching for a feeling Haven't found it yet Hope I don't regret it I've been searching for a feeling I've got everything to feel To feel You're leaving love I've been searching for a Only You're leaving love I've been searching everywhere I've been searching I've been searching everywhere
And it comes to my heart And I don't need a reason And it comes to me like a hurricane I feel no shame, I'm running 'Cause I was born and made of The thing I know I'm not aware Of what I've got in my heart It's all good It's where I'm looking at It's where I'm looking at It's where I'm looking at Just enough It's where I'm looking at And knowing where I stand You can take it, leave it This is you, this is who I am I'm the one I'm the one The run for it to have got a road And that journey feels like home sweet I feel no shame, I'm running I'm running Oh, I'm ready I'm ready Yeah I'm ready I'm ready My heart is so in the moonlight I'm ready, I'm ready We don't need to see the heart is gone I've got my heart in my hand Take your hand, I'm ready I'm ready, I'm ready Who's going? Tell me my heart's on Saturday night Church on Saturday morning Yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready Who's going? Tell me my heart's on Saturday night Church on Saturday morning Yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready We don't need to see the heart is gone Tell me my heart's on Saturday night Church on Saturday morning Yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready Who's going? Tell me my heart's on Saturday night Church on Saturday morning Oh, yeah